You're listening to the Chad Hasty Show on demand. Good for you. Now download the KFYO app and listen live weekday afternoons, five to seven P. M. Central.
Broadcasting from the great state of Texas, this is the Chad Hasty Show. News and views with a Lone Star perspective. You can sound off during the show by sending Chad a text at eight oh six six eight zero two seven ninety. That's eight oh six six eight zero two seven ninety, or call in at one eight hundred six eight seven zero seven ninety. Now here's Chad Hasty.
Good evening Lubbock, Amarillo, Abilene, Wichita Falls, Mendonahodessa, Dallas, Fort Worth, Downey, Houston, oh, and El Paso, and anywhere else, inside or outside the great state of Texas, wherever you may be listening on this Thursday, October tenth, twenty twenty four, welcome in to the program. It's gonna be a busy one today. It's gonna be a busy, busy show as we've got a few guests lined up for you coming up here in just a little bit. Kerry Shaw, he's running for Lubbock County Commissioner in Precinct Three. We'll visit with him about his campaign as we get closer and closer to the election. We'll visit with Holly Hansen with the Texan News. She'll be giving us a call right around five thirty-five this evening, get a update on some of the big headlines across the Lone Star State. Mark Feigner will join us at six oh five this evening with the West Texas Friday Night Scoreboard Show. So we've got a, obviously a packed show, a lot to get into, a lot of different topics that we'll be touching on and getting into, want to hear from you about throughout the program today. You can text in at any time at eight zero six six eight zero two seven nine zero. That's eight zero six six eight zero two seven nine zero. Give us your name, where you're listening from, where you'd like to get all those details from you. That way we can give you the proper acknowledgement whenever you do text in. You can also give us a call at one eight hundred six eight seven zero seven ninety. That's one eight hundred six eight seven zero seven ninety. You can give us a call. You can also follow me on social media at Chad Hasty Radio. And just a heads up tomorrow, right about this time, actually, we'll be visiting with Congressman Jody Arrington. He's gonna stop by the studio tomorrow and discuss a few things. And here's the, he doesn't know I'm gonna ask him about this. So we'll see if his, if the staff is listening so they can kind of clue him in beforehand. But he's going to be doing a coin flip at one of the high school football games tomorrow evening. So he's gotta get out of here before, you know, the high school football game, all that kind of stuff, because he's gotta be out there early and do the coin flip. We're gonna see if he has like a, a certain style when it comes to the coin flip. Because you see, well, Nick, you see some people do the coin flip, and you would think like me, right? You flip the coin. But there are some people who, when they get the, the coin to flip, they just kind of toss it into the, yeah, they just toss it, or they throw it like it's a frisbee. I don't know. I've seen weird things when it comes to the coin toss before. So I don't know. We'll see if, if, you know, what his plans are for the, for the coin toss tomorrow evening. So we've got, we've got a lot to get into. We'll have another family four pack of tickets to give away to the Gun and Blade Show today, which means those of you in Lubbock, you'll have to pick them up tomorrow. So you're gonna want to make sure that you can go and it will have that family four pack for you ready to go. We're not giving it away yet. We'll let you know when. You can call in and when those, the first voice you hear from when you do dial in today, really, I haven't seen them all day. Nick, the first voice you hear from when you dial in, this time truly, I haven't seen you.
Yeah. Well, we do briefly, for about five seconds.
Yeah, you poked your head in my office and went blah, blah, blah. And I'm like, yeah, sure.
And I, that's all I said.
Yeah, exactly.
Like, like the parents in Peanuts?
Yes.
That's all I talk about.
Won't, 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 won't. And I'm like, yeah, sure, buddy, whatever.
Yeah. I'm actually, so I'm very, I'm, I'm, I'm looking forward to the end of today, more so than usual.
Yeah.
For dinner, in elegant array of Chick-fil-A. Chick-fil-A for dinner.
There's nothing wrong with that.
I'm very excited.
There's, there's nothing. So today, I was in a meeting all day today.
Chick-fil-A there?
Uh, no, no, no Chick-fil-A, not even close. It's not in the general vicinity of Chick-fil-A. But had, had a, an all-day meeting today, which I will be in all-day meeting tomorrow. But I was told Chick-fil-A.
Tomorrow?
Yeah.
Ooh.
Chick-fil-A provided tomorrow.
So what, did they provide food today then?
No.
Oh.
There were some snacks.
You're on your own today.
Yeah, we were on our own today, which is fine. It's all good.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was fine, because that's what I planned for.
Right.
And, and so that was good. But tomorrow, tomorrow, it's, it's gonna be, I was, at least they had previewed, maybe some nugget trays coming in.
Ooh.
You gotta love the nugget trays.
Do you, do you like the Chick-fil-A nuggets?
Yeah.
You do?
Yeah.
I.
Don't, don't diss Chick-fil-A nuggets.
I don't know if I'm a big fan.
Yeah, why not?
I don't know.
Is it because they're tiny?
I, no, I think it's the, I think it's the breading.
It's the same thing as the chicken sandwich.
But the, but the sandwiches work for me. But the nuggets, I.
Ah, this doesn't make any sense whatsoever.
I'm just, I'm, I'm not a nugget fan.
You could just put little tiny, tiny pieces of bread on the nuggets.
Little sliders?
Little sliders to go.
Yeah.
They have those for breakfast.
Cut a pickle in half, a little pickle slice in half, put that.
Take a little slice of a pickle, put it on the, the nug, and you're good.
Yeah, yeah.
How can you not like the Chick-fil-A nuggets? This is deeply disturbing.
Here's another thing that's probably disturbing. I don't like biscuits in general. I think I brought this up on the show before. I don't like biscuits, cornbread, just dry.
Do want to remind everyone he is from Wisconsin.
Dry, crumbly bread.
Yeah.
If I, if I'm gonna have a sandwich, a Chick-fil-A sandwich, the regular bun.
Yeah.
That they normally do, the little burger bun, that's good.
Yeah, I got you.
Or a croissant, delicious. Croissant, delicious. But then you lose me with the, when you start getting into the biscuit territory.
Yeah.
You lost me.
You don't like biscuits anywhere. You don't like no biscuits.
Get those off my plate. I'm not gonna eat those. No.
Yeah, he is from Wisconsin.
Yeah, yeah, we don't have biscuits up there.
You don't have biscuits up there. It's just, it's real sauce.
Blocks of sharp cheddar cheese as buns.
I would think that, yeah.
It's very, very hard to eat.
Cheese buns. That's what y'all, that's what you got up there.
We call it cheese buns.
Yeah, exactly. We've got a lot to get into throughout the program today. Want to hear from you. You can text in at eight zero six six eight zero two seven nine zero. And yes, you can also give us a call as well. Like I said, there's just a lot that we'll be getting into throughout the program today. We do have some local headlines that, that we'll be getting into as well during the show. And of course, we always want to hear from you at eight zero six six eight zero two seven nine zero. That's eight zero six six eight zero two seven nine zero. How about this, real quick, before we take the break? Saw this story, it's actually out of New Mexico, but it, it just, it tells you just how crazy, and, and just how prepared you need to be. No matter what, you gotta be prepared. Major crimes unit of the Ninth Judicial District investigating a homicide in Clovis, this is Clovis, New Mexico. Seventy-eight-year-old Virginia Montoya was shot and killed in her home in Clovis on Wednesday. The, later the, that afternoon, Eastern New Mexico News reported that Dan Lucero was identified as a person of interest. Lucero's Montoya's husband's grandson. All she did was open the door, and, and he shot her. I mean, just absolute craziness, when you see a story like that. It's just, you gotta, gosh, and you, I mean, you hate to think that's a family member, too, that does that. But you just, absolute evil all over the place. And just, it's one of those where you just go, just pray for our country. Just pray for our country. We, we absolutely need it. When we come back, we're gonna visit with Kerry Shaw. He's hoping to win that Precinct Three seat in Lubbock County. Visit with him when we return on the Chad Hasty Show.
The Titan of Texas Talk Radio, Chad Hasty.
Talking with newsmakers and about the issues that matter to you. The Chad Hasty Show, weekdays from five to seven P. M. Chad's show is also digital with the Chad Hasty Show Podcast. The Chad Hasty Show Podcast can be downloaded on Apple Podcasts, Amazon Music, Spotify, and the radio on demand page at kfyo.com. The Chad Hasty Show, all across Texas during your drive home, weekdays from five to seven P. M.
I'm a pretty great multitasker. I can wash dishes and do laundry. I can roller skate while walking my dog. I can even order lunch while doing my homework. But I can't use my phone while driving. A distracted driver is one of the leading causes of death in the United States. So when it comes to driving, please, don't be a multitasker.
Don't drive distracted. A message brought to you by the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, Project Yellow Light, and the Ad Council.
Welcome back to the Chad Hasty Show. Happy Thursday. We're getting closer to the weekend. Everybody's happy about that. We're also getting closer to early voting, which begins on the twenty-first. I told you, I told you probably about four months ago, I told you it won't be long. And then I've told you numerous times since, it won't be long before we get out and vote. And it's coming up very, very quickly. And for those of you in Lubbock County, one of the big campaigns out there that Republicans are hoping to flip is Lubbock County Precinct Number Three. We've got Kerry Shaw in the, in the studio, running for Precinct Three County Commissioner. Kerry Shaw, welcome back. How you doing today?
Thanks, Chad. I'm doing great. Thank you for having me today.
Yeah, absolutely. And I know you've been working hard, and you've got a, a big team behind you, and the, the, the local GOP out there working to get you elected and help get you elected in, in Precinct Three.
I do, you know, and I thank the Republican Party, especially L. R. W. They, they have been wonderful. David Bruegel's been wonderful. Jim Baxa has, has walked his legs off. David Acuff has walked for me. It's, it's just been good. I, I know, I can't name everybody that's been walking, because it's been tremendous.
And, and, you know, Precinct Three, that is, it's one of those precincts where in the past, it's been, one, hard to get a lot of people out to vote. You know, it's, it's one of those where it's low voter turnout. So when we talk about every vote matters, truly, in Precinct Three, it, it may come down to just a handful of votes.
It absolutely could. That's what I've been trying to stress to people. We don't need thirty percent of Precinct Three deciding who's gonna be the commissioner this time. We need a good turnout. And we need people not just stop and vote for the president. We need them to vote all the way down the ballot.
Yeah, absolutely. So tell people kind of what your vision is, why you want to be on the, on the County Commissioners Court. Sometimes it seems like it can be a little bit of a zoo with the county commissioners. Just, I don't know, just, you know, they've been in the headlines recently. Why would you want to be on the Commissioners Court?
Well, you know, God has told me I'm the one to bring Precinct Three up to the standards of the other three. That's the reason I want to be there. And I want to be the conservative voice that can turn the Commissioners Court to a conservative court, which we haven't had for a long time.
Mm-hmm. What did you think about the, the, you say walkout, whatever you want to call it, when, when you had, you know, Commissioner Corley and, 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 you know, they, they walked out, and said they're not gonna vote. They wanted to hold taxes to the no-new revenue rate. What did you think about all of that?
Well, I applaud their, their courage for doing that, because that's the only way they could protect the people of Lubbock County from a three-and-a-half percent tax increase, you know?
So you disagreed with the county judge?
Oh, absolutely. He said he had a mandate to, to raise taxes that much every year. But yet everything that I saw, there was no mandate. You know, Mayor Mark McBrer was elected seventy to thirty, running completely against that, and that was Lubbock white. You know, I don't know where the mandate came for them to decide they wanted to, to do that. And, you know, my opponent was, has always been the vote to raise taxes.
Yeah. So when, when it comes to getting, getting projects done, getting work done in Precinct Three, what is lacking? What are people telling you when you're, you know, block walking, when you're talking to people? I mean, you, you, you know a lot of folks in Precinct Three. What are they saying to you?
You know, the big thing is the streets. You know, they've, they've cletched a lot of, a lot of the roads since the last election, but they haven't done them right. You go down these new cletched roads, and somebody's gotta get in a bar ditch if you meet somebody because they, they're too narrow, you know? And I saw at the Commissioners' meeting, they expect cletchy to last four to seven years. Why? If it's taken care of, if it's kept on the road, it won't wear out. You know, cletchy should be there for twenty-five or thirty years. And that's one of the ways we'll save tax money, is by not having to replace the cletchy. And we can get more roads, you know, weather-worthy, if we take care of what we put there.
Yeah. Some of the, the, when I, you know, one thing that I get, you know, from, from a lot of folks are, you know, in different projects. Are there projects that the Commissioners have come up with in the past that you haven't been a fan of? If you had been elected, let's say for the past four years, what would you have done differently? Other than taxes, what would you have done differently?
Well, I would have supervised the work that was going on, which has not been done. You know, I know that we've got to move and, and not hold up stuff. When bonds have been issued, we need to get it done now. We don't need to wait and, and let the prices go up to where the bond can't cover what's, what's been done. And I think that I would be the bear in the saddle to get everything started, and, and not just sit on the back burner.
Yeah. When it comes to some of the future projects, some of the possible future things going on in Lubbock County, I think a lot of eyes go to the, to the jail and wonder what is, you know, what the future's gonna be there. Do we add new, do we add new construction? Do we build new pods? What do we do? What, what do you think about that?
We add a court. Plain and simple. Those people in, in jail don't need to be held up for the amount of time they're there, you know, wait a year to be processed. If they're not guilty, you've ruined a family. If they're guilty, they haven't got their due justice because they're promised a speedy trial. And you can empty out the jail by adding a court and getting those people processed.
So what's been the holdup on that?
I'm not sure. You know, what's been the holdup in this whole time is a, two Commissioners that want to be conservative, and two Commissioners that want to spend, 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 tax, tax, tax. And, you know, it, it's like oil and water. There, there is no compromise. The Democrat Party is always, if you compromise, it's give me everything that I want, and you forget about what you want. That's their view of compromise.
Yeah.
And so that's been the holdup in the whole court. When you've got three liberals and two conservatives, you're not gonna get anything done.
Do, do you feel as though, and maybe the people in, in the precinct, do they see enough of the current County Commissioner, or is he, what someone say, absent?
He's completely absent. You know, my opponent hadn't been in the, in the rural part of Lubbock County in probably ten years. The only time he comes out in the Idlewood area or any place is to put out campaign signs the day before the election. That's the only time anybody sees him. He don't answer phone calls. You know, he's just a no-show, and, and he allows the, the people under him to just go doing what they want to without supervision.
Yeah. If, if elected, how do you think a court would look with, you know, you have, you have, you know, Dolby coming on board. You've got Rackler there, you've got, you know, you, you, you've got yourself if elected. How do you think that court would look?
I think it'll be an extremely conservative court.
Yeah.
I think that what will happen is we will toe the line on taxes. And that way, when we need more money, because there will come a time, there'll have to be more money. But we can put it on the ballot and get the people to approve it, and not be taking money from them without their permission.
Do you think the county judge will sing a different tune when it comes to taxes?
No, never. He's, he's shown that the past two times he's been elected, he's the same every day. And when a man shows you what he is, you gotta believe that's what he is.
So how do you think that dynamic will be with, you know, with him not, maybe not having the votes, obviously, when it comes to tax increases? But just that dynamic, how do you think it'll be?
Well, I think that he will just have to learn to live with a conservative court.
Yeah.
That's, that's what I think. I think he'll be disappointed, but I think he'll have to learn to work with us.
What have, because you've run before.
Yes.
For, for this position. What have you taken away from that time and, and, and put into this run?
You know, I've, I've worked hard both times. But I have gotten to the point that I see the people that, that I need to vote, and I stress to them the importance of them getting out and vote. And then I, I tell them, you know, kind of my vision of what I want to, you know, to do for the county, and what our current Commissioner is not doing for the county. And, and I think that it's really resonated with them.
How can people get more information about you and your campaign?
They can call me at eight oh six seven eight seven four nine five seven, or they can go to elect Kerry Shaw on Facebook, or Kerry Shaw Campaign on Instagram.
All right, very good. Always good to see you.
You, too.
Yeah. Best of luck to you, and let's get you in before the, before the election, okay?
Let's do that.
All right, let's do it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, when we come back, your phone calls, your texts, and Holly Hansen with the Texan News will join us when we come back on the Chad Hasty Show.
Heads up, Texas.
So you don't hit my car when I'm sitting at a stoplight.
Heads up, Texas.
So I can ride my bike safely.
Heads up, Texas.
So I can make it across the street without getting run over.
Heads up, Texas.
So I don't have to write you a ticket.
Heads up, Texas, because driving and using your phone is a bad combination. Talk, text, crash. Brought to you by Textdot.
Watch out!
You got me!
The galaxy safe once again!
In the pretend universe, kids play with pretend guns. In the real world, it's up to us to make sure they don't get their hands on a real gun. If you have a gun in the house, keep it locked, unloaded, and stored separately from ammunition. Safe gun storage saves lives. Learn how to make your home safer at nfamilyfire.org. That's nfamilyfire.org. Brought to you by N Family Fire, Brady, and the Ad Council.
The news and talk of West Texas, News Talk ninety-five point one and seven ninety, KFYO. You're listening to the Chad Hasty Show.
All right, welcome back to the Chad Hasty Show. Appreciate you being out there today. You can send in your thoughts on the text line, eight oh six six eight zero two seven nine zero. Thanks to Kerry Shaw for stepping by and for stopping by and talking about his campaign for office in Precinct Three County Commissioner. Let's go to the phones. And with our good friends over at the Texan News, we have Holly Hansen. Holly, welcome back. How are you this week?
I'm doing great. How are you? It's been a while.
It has been. It's great to, to have you back with us and talking to us about some of the latest big headlines making, making their way across the Lone Star State. Y'all are busy all, all the time over at the Texan.
I tell you what.
It's just, the news never stops, right?
It never does. It's twenty-four seven.
Uh, let's talk about Dallas County real quick, and the Dallas County Elections Equipment verified by state officials. What's going on there?
Yeah, so there was a big blow up in Dallas County recently over reportedly failed logic and accuracy test that took place last month, during which there were erroneously tabulated results. But this week, officials from the Texas Secretary of State's Office and the Office of the Attorney General, and the Dallas County Democratic and Republican Parties, all went to witness a successful testing of the equipment. So they took some random equipment from the warehouse. It was selected for testing. They found that each component passed the hash testing is what they call it, that ensures the equipment is running the software that's certified by the Election Assistance Commission and the Secretary of State's Office as required by law. The Dallas County Elections Administrator, Hyder Garcia, said that the officials reviewed the results from that September eighteenth test that didn't work out so well. And they said that any preliminary errors that occurred on that day were consistent with human error during the ballot printing process, and not failures in their system. There is a lot of jittery nerves over elections this year, of course, considering the large number of really close races, especially in Dallas County, because there's two state reps that have some very tough reelection races, and they happen to be the last two Republican representatives to the Texas House of Representatives left in Dallas County.
Yeah. Yeah, that, and that's, a lot of eyes will definitely be on making sure everything is free and fair when it comes to the elections in Texas. A lot of eyes will be on that. And when it comes to the Dallas GOP, I mean, they, like you said, it's just, just winning state with some, some, you know, area offices. It's been hard for them. But now you've got some activists who are getting involved and saying to vote against some of the embattled House Republicans?
Yeah. So there, apparently, there's a group of activists, and they're trying to have the Dallas County Republican Party adopt a resolution that calls on those two Republican reps, State Rep Morgan Meyer and Angie Chin Button, to sign what they call the Contract with Texas. And that contract lists twelve demands for all the Republican House members. And it includes promises to give committee chairmanships to Republicans, and to limit the House Speaker to two terms, and that's, you know, a whole bunch of other provisions. But the, the, there was this controversial discussion that was recorded, where they're talking about this resolution at a meeting between the GOP activists that's really riled up the Texas political scene. And what they stated was a desire for voters to abstain from voting for Meyer or Chin Button, should the two refuse to sign this contract with Texas. That one of the activists was heard saying on the recording, will recommend that voters abstain from voting for candidates who won't sign the contract with Texas. An attendee then asked so to be clear, we're saying we're okay with having a Democrat over a Republican who does not sign this. And in answer, two of these activists say, yes. So Texas GOP Chair Abraham George and the former Chair, Matt Rinaldi, put out a joint statement trying to dissuade consideration of that resolution and the call for Republican voters to abstain voting for them. They said, now is not the time to side with Democrats in any way. And they emphasized the need to elect Republicans across the board and make it clear to everyone that they won't let Democrats pick who leads the Texas House next session anyway. You know, Chin Button faces a very well-funded Democrat, so she's got a tough race ahead of her. And Donald Trump very nearly won her district in twenty twenty, and Governor Greg Abbott won it by about two point six points in twenty twenty-two. So Meyer faces also a well-funded Democrat, Elizabeth Ginsburg, I think it's pronounced. She's raised six figures for her race. Trump nearly lost that district four years ago, and Abbott won it by six point five points in twenty twenty-two. So these are very close races, and neither can afford to lose those reliable GOP votes in the general election.
Well, and for those who may not be too familiar with the, the Contract for Texas or to Texas, you know, whatever it may be called, a, a lot of this is process, right? I mean, it, it's, it's the.
Yeah.
It, it, it's things that the average Texan would have no idea about, or really even pay attention to. It, it really doesn't deal with legislation. You, you, when it comes to, you know, like, school choice, and, you know, you sign this, say you're gonna support school choice. It, it doesn't get into that, correct?
No, it doesn't. It refers to things that most voters don't even know about, the, something called the Calendars Committee, and the parliamentarians, and, you know, it's, it's really those, you know, nitty-gritty details of the process, as you put it. It's a great way to state it.
Yeah, it's, it's like, you know, you may be upset with the two Republicans who may not sign it, but the Democrats probably won't sign it if the Republicans aren't signing it.
Absolutely not. And they're probably gonna differ on a lot of the policy issues that are important to Republican Party voters.
Yeah, absolutely. And then finally, a. Yeah, absolutely. And then, uh, finally, uh, these, these type of stories keep popping up about these license plate readers. Uh, tell, tell us about this, uh, out of the Texas DPS.
Yeah. So Texas DPS issued a license to a provider of this controversial surveillance technology. The cameras are installed all over the place. They read your license plate, but they're also capable of reading a lot of information about your vehicle, your bumper stickers, make and model of your car. It's uploaded in real time to the cloud, correlated with other data, and it allows, uh, these companies to know where you are, where you've been and so forth. It is used by law enforcement to, uh, to solve crimes and has been very successful in some settings. But the one company got in trouble here in the state of Texas is a company called Flock Safety, and they were found to be installing these readers in private businesses in violation of state statute that requires them to have a license. So the interesting thing is that we're found in violation of those state requirements in twenty twenty one, but it doesn't appear that any, anything was done about it. Uh, again, in twenty twenty four, they were found in violation. And in twenty twenty four, they did get a cease and desist letter from Texas DPS, uh, which got them, I guess, jumping through all the proper hoops necessary to get that licensure. Um, there are some questions about how they still got a license since they were in violation. And one of the grounds for denying a license is being in violation of state law, uh, but they haven't gotten that license. Now, this is a very controversial issue. There is a federal lawsuit pending in the state of Illinois over use of these readers, uh, because basically they're gathering up a lot of data on a lot of people. And, uh, one of this, uh, one of these law firms is arguing that this is a violation of the fourth amendment's prohibition on unwarranted search and seizure. And, uh, there's not any specific ruling right now on the use of these cameras and this technology, although there may be some other case law that, uh, says you can't have, you know, a GPS tracker on a car without a warrant and these kinds of things. So this is something I think we're going to continue to see play out in the courts. One of the concerns is whether or not evidence collected by these devices can be used. There was an Oklahoma judge, uh, I think it was last month or earlier this year, who threw out evidence collected from these readers. And, uh, you know, I, I talked to one of our state reps who's an attorney earlier today, and he told me that while he's not a criminal defense attorney, if he had a client being prosecuted using the evidence, uh, from this company's cameras, when they were not legally operating in these locations, uh, he'd ask to have that evidence thrown out. So, uh, you know, there are still concerns, but I think we're, I think we're going to continue to see a lot of discussion about this technology and it's probably going to end up before the Supreme Court, before it's all said and done.
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, Holly, any other stories that you want to point out to the listeners? Anything you're working on that they can find over at the Texan dot news?
Uh, we've got so many interesting stories there. And I think anyone who's been looking for information about all of the hot races here in the state of Texas ought to check it out. There's one about some close races in the San Antonio area. Also Tarrant County, uh, Democrats are pouring resources into Tarrant County, uh, to try to flip some of those seats there. And, uh, also, you know, we've got a couple of stories up about some down ballot races that a lot of people don't talk about because they're busy talking about the presidential race or the Senate race. But we've got these courts of appeals here in Texas that wield a lot of power. They hear appeals for every kind of case in the state of Texas, uh, criminal, civil, juvenile and family cases. And they're often the courts that have the last word in these cases since the Supreme Court and the other state top court only take about ten percent of cases up to, to issue a decision. So really important races. We've got a couple of stories about, about those, uh, races. And to show you how important they are, one of the, uh, political action committees helping fund, uh, Republicans, uh, has raised a whopping eight million dollars, which is really kind of unprecedented for this kind of, uh, these kind of down ballot races. And one of the big donors is none other than Elon Musk, who gave them a million dollars.
Very good. All right. Holly, as always, appreciate your time. Always great to hear from you. And, uh, everyone over at the Texan, uh, you'll keep doing the great work.
Thanks so much, Chad. We always appreciate you.
All right. Thank you. That's Holly Hansen over at the Texan dot news. Visit their website today. We'll be right back on the Chad Hasty Show.
The Chad Hasty Show can be heard all over West Texas, weekdays from five to seven P M. Tune in on News Talk ninety five point one and seven ninety K F Y O in Lubbock, News Talk nine forty in Amarillo, News Talk ninety four point seven and fourteen seventy K Y Y W in Abilene, and in Wichita Falls on News Talk ninety six point three and twelve ninety. The Chad Hasty Show. Make it a part of your drive home, weekdays from five to seven P M.
Sometimes as dads, I think we're too hard on ourselves. We get down on ourselves on not being able to, you know, we're the providers, but we also have to learn to take care of ourselves. Or Apple Way, you gotta pray for yourself as well as for everybody else, but never forget yourself. Self-love made me a better dad because I realized my worth.
Never stop being a dad. That's dedication. Find out more at fatherhood.gov. Brought to you by the U S Department of Health and Human Services and the Ad Council.
All right. Back on the Chad Hasty Show. Thank you very much for tuning in today. Happy Thursday. Uh, how about this? As we, uh, get ready to hit that top of the hour, uh, break, let's give away a family four pack of tickets to the Gun and Blade Show happening on Saturday. And we're going to be out there broadcasting two to four P M. Now, uh, you can go Saturday, you can go Sunday, which whichever day you feel like going, but you have to pick these tickets up tomorrow. You, you can't pick them up on Saturday. You've got to be able to pick these tickets up tomorrow here at the radio station. So if you'd like to go, if you'd like to win a family four pack of tickets to the Gun and Blade Show, uh, be caller number seven. No, no, I'm going to change that. Caller number eight. Caller number eight. And one eight hundred six eight seven zero seven ninety. That's one eight hundred six eight seven zero seven ninety. You can also call on the local number at eight zero six six nine nine five three nine six. That's eight zero six six nine nine five three nine six. Eight oh six six nine nine five three nine six. And caller number eight. We will get you, uh, hooked up with a family four pack of tickets to the Gun and Blade Show, or a final four pack of tickets that we're, uh, going to be giving away. And again, for those of you in Lubbock, uh, if you're coming out to the Gun and Blade Show on Saturday, we'll be out there from two to four P M. Would love to meet as many of you as possible. You can stop on by and, uh, say hello. And if we're on the air, you can just, you know, you can kind of hang out. And, uh, when we go to break, uh, we'll say hello to you. We'll also have some, uh, Chad Easty Show stickers to give away, some little freebies there. And, uh, well, we may have some other things as well to, uh, give away. Yeah, we may have some, uh, Nightmare on Nineteenth Street tickets to give away, some passes if you want to go to a Nightmare on Nineteenth Street. We'll have those as well to, uh, to give away. All right. How about this, uh, out of Fox, uh, Walls Silent on Support for Eliminating the Electoral College After the Harris Camp Says It Does Not Back the Ban? Remember earlier this week, uh, you had, uh, you had Tim Walz, who said that it's a time to eliminate the Electoral College. Vice President Kamala Harris's running mate remained silent today on whether he still supports eliminating the Electoral College after the Harris campaign insisted his position did not reflect that of the campaigns. Quote, "I think all of us know the Electoral College needs to go. We need a national popular vote," Walz said Tuesday during a campaign fundraiser at the home of the Democrat, uh, Governor Gavin Newsom. Walz made similar comments at an earlier fundraiser in Seattle as well. While running for president in twenty nineteen, Harris said she was open to the idea of abolishing the Electoral College. However, according to campaign officials pressed on the issue, following Walz's remarks, eliminating the Electoral College in favor of a national popular vote is not an official position of Harris's current campaign. That's amazing. She, she was for it. Now she's against it. It's, it's like every other thing for Kamala Harris. She was, she was against it. Now she's for it, or she was, uh, for it then. Now she's against it. But then she won't really camp, she won't really comment on anything either. And of course Walz, he's keeping his mouth shut. And said now they're saying every, uh, Governor Walz believes that every vote matters in the Electoral College, and he's honored to be traveling the country in the battleground states, working there in the support of the Harris Walz ticket. A Harris campaign spokesperson said, "I guess they're going to throw Walz in the basement if Kamala wins." Hell, he might throw both of them in the basement. What an embarrassment these two are. When we come back, Mark Feinkner from the West Texas Friday Night Scoreboard Show will join us. We'll talk a little high school football.
The Chad Hasty Show, a presentation of the Texas Town Square Media Network. The views and opinions expressed during the Chad Hasty Show are not necessarily the views of the station staff, management, advertisers, or Town Square Media. Broadcasting from the great state of Texas, this is the Chad Hasty Show. News and views with a Lone Star perspective. You can sound off during the show by sending Chad a text at eight oh six six eight zero two seven ninety. That's eight oh six six eight zero two seven ninety, or call in at one eight hundred six eight seven zero seven ninety. Now, here's Chad Hasty.
All right. Welcome back to the Chad Hasty Show, final hour of the program. Glad to have you with us this evening. Now, I know I said that was the last family four pack of tickets that we were going to give away. But the winner, well, the winner was in Abilene. And I feel bad. I feel, I feel bad for the, the winner, but they, they weren't going to be able to make it to Lubbock for the Gun and Blade Show. And so, um, so sorry to that, the, to that, uh, listener, but he went, oh, oh, wait a minute. That, uh, I'm in Abilene. This is not for Abilene, is it? Is, okay. And so, uh, don't worry, we're going to get some Abilene stuff to give away, uh, very soon. But, uh, we will have another family. You're, you're, his, his loss is your reward, is, is your gain, uh, because we will be giving away the family four pack that was going to go to that listener. We're going to give that, uh, away once again. So stay tuned. We're not giving it away right now. Don't call in. I'll let you know when it's time to call. Uh, so we'll have the final, final four pack of tickets to give away to the Gun and Blade Show. We switched gears from talking a little politics to finding out what is happening on the field. That's right. Another week of high school football and joining us on the phones right now with the West Texas Friday Night Scoreboard Show, it's our good friend, Mark Feinkner hanging out with us on this Thursday evening. Mark, good evening. How you doing?
Man, I'm good, Chad. How are you guys tonight?
We're good. We're good. We're, uh, we're ready for, uh, the weekend. We're ready for another, uh, another great weekend of football as well.
No doubt. This week is a big week because unless you're in a four-team district, if you're in a five or a six team, this week starts district play. So this is a big, big week for everybody out there. We've got some great games up on the board. Uh, we'll kind of go, uh, in terms of by market. Uh, you know, you talked about Abilene. We're going to go there in a minute, but we're going to start in the Panhandle in Amarillo. As one of our top games of the night, regardless of classification tomorrow, is number two Stratford at number ten Groover. Uh, these rankings, uh, the A P, Dave Campbell's Texas Football Rankings, other ranking services, Pickskin Prep, Harris may have them slightly different. But what we know is this, two of the best teams out there in two A Division Two going to square off. Stratford has the advantage in the all-time series. Uh, they've won the last six in this series since Groover went to the state finals in twenty eighteen. Uh, you know, it, it's a great rivalry. There's a bunch of rival games out there. We'll talk more about that on the show tomorrow night. But this game has got it all. Stratford, even though they're the road team picked by about a touchdown, they're three and two. Groover is a perfect six and oh. Uh, this ought to be outstanding. This is, this is a benchmark for both teams. I mean, obviously district championship's on the line right out of the chute because the other three teams in that district, okay, but not nearly at their level. So, uh, this will be a matchup for the Marbles tomorrow night at Greyhound Stadium in Groover. Uh, man, I, I could see this game going either way. I like, I like, I, I could see either team winning by about a touchdown or two in this. And I don't, I don't think it'll be a blowout one way or the other. I do think it'll be a very competitive game. Uh, you know, when you get to this time of year, it will be defense that will ultimately prove to be the difference in this one. So it'll be a great matchup tomorrow night at the top of the Panhandle. Some of the other good games in the Amarillo area, Amarillo High and Caprock, uh, squaring off. The Sandies should prevail there, but of course Caprock with their season kind of on the line here right now, they want to avoid an oh and two start in district play. Amarillo coming off a sixty-three forty-two loss to Abilene last Friday. Paladuro in five A Division Two, traveling to Abilene. They're making the long trip this week to take on Abilene Wiley. Paladuro gave a very good account of themselves. They did not win against Wichita Falls Memorial in their opener last week, but they, they were in front in the second half against one of the contenders in that district. So how do the Dons respond against Abilene Wiley tomorrow night? Because if Wiley wins, they go to three and oh, and they put Paladuro behind the eight ball at oh and two in district play. But if the Dons can find a way to win on the road, and it's possible, uh, that Coach Mim's team can win, then boy, it really shuffles some things in, in that two-five-eight Division Two. Amongst some of the other games, Andrews at state-ranked Bushland. I think the Falcons continue to roll along. Perryton will travel down to Lubbock to take on Cooper Liberty. Uh, Perryton since their opening win against Canyon High way back in week one, that's still Canyon's only loss of the year. And for Perryton, uh, that's one of only two wins they have on the year. And I think the Rangers trying to prove that, hey, that was more of a, not a fluke, but Cooper Liberty continues to get better each and every week, although the record doesn't show it. But at one and five, I think Joe Sexton's team in, in four A Division Two, this is a district bowl game, uh, that one is, that one's going to play a factor. Amongst some of the other games, the Amarillo area, no, Denver City at Dalhart, River Road in Lamisa, Demet taking on Tullia tonight. Highland Park at West Texas High, two teams that have not been necessarily more on the winning track in the last few years. They both have winning records, uh, opening district play. That ought to be a good one there. And in the six-man ranks, Nazareth Crest, Valette LaFors, and maybe the game of the week in six-man takes place Saturday with Jonesboro making a five and a half hour drive to Miami to take on the Warriors in a battle of state-ranked teams. That one will be good on Saturday afternoon in Miami. In the Lubbock Market, we look at some of the best games on the board. We go to Wolford tomorrow night as Midland High and Friendship square off there at Tiger Stadium. The fact that the Tigers, uh, un, uh, boy, they've just put up tremendous offensive numbers all year long. But last year, Midland High was the one team that kind of really slowed them down, held them to just twenty-eight when they were regularly scoring forty and fifty like they are this year. Midland High held them to twenty-eight when the Dogs beat them last year thirty-eight, twenty-eight in Midland. So can Jay Northcutt's team rebound, start district play the right way? Both teams at four and one. This is a huge game tomorrow night in district play there. Amongst some of the other good games in the Lubbock Market, Coronado at Abilene High, Lubbock High and Monterey in the battle for the Spurs. They did not play the last two years, trying to get numbers up at Lubbock High. Now they're back in Division One. They're in the same district. They go at it tomorrow night. Monterey has won fourteen straight in the Silver Spurs series as they go tomorrow night at Plains Capital Park. Lubbock Cooper hosting Abilene Cooper. I think the Pirates continue to roll along in, in two A Division One, New Home at Abernathy, Post and New Deal. New Deal, a team that has won fifteen straight district games. They've gone five and oh each of the last three years in district play, but with New Home going up and Abernathy coming down and those two square off. But with New Home going up and Abernathy coming down, and those two square off tomorrow night at Antelope Field in Abernathy. But you've got New Home, Abernathy, Post at New Deal, Post is 5-0. They were a team that nobody was talking about at the beginning of the year, and now they are getting it done. So tho, those are two great games in 2A Division One. Slaton and Littlefield going at it, uh, Rawls and Hale Center, both Trinity Christian and Lubbock Christian in district play. In the private school ranks, Lubbock, uh, Trinity Christian hosting Fort Worth Christian, Lubbock Christian hosting Fort Worth Lake Country. Uh, I, I expect the Lubbock schools to win, although the Trinity Christian matchup with Fort Worth Christian is a better matchup, but I, I think LC continues to roll, I think Trinity Christian, that'll be a good game actually. And in the six-man ranks, my Petersburg Buffaloes taking on Lorenzo and Southland at Loop amongst the games we look at. In the Abilene area, we've already talked about Abilene High and how they put up 63 last week, they've got Coronado at home, we've talked about Paladuro and Wiley, Abilene Cooper and Lubbock Cooper. Jim Ned at Comanche is a good one in 3A Division One, in a very competitive district there, as those two go at it tomorrow night. That's the best in 3A Division One there tomorrow night. Holly and Anson, one of the other big games up on the board, Cisco at Stanford. Can the Lobos go on the road and knock off the number one team in the state in Stanford tomorrow night? Brownwood at Lampassus in Class 4A, uh, one service has this as a Pick'em game, the other has Lampassus as a slight favorite. Uh, Lampassus moving into that district now with Brownwood and Stephenville, both teams have been state-ranked at times this year, that ought to be a really good one at Badger Stadium down in Lampassus. DeLeon at Heiko, Ballinger at Banks, Holly and Anson, Miles at Albany amongst some of the games that we're looking at there. And one other game in the Lubbock Market I failed to mention, that's a big one, Ropes and Tahoca, the winner with the inside track to the, uh, 3-2A Division Two championship, in my opinion, Ropes at 5-0, Tahoca at 4-1, two teams that really were not talked about. It was more Sundown and Seagraves, uh, that were talked about at the beginning of the year, but Ropes and Tahoca doing an excellent job, that ought to be a good one tomorrow night. And Tahoca in the Wichita Falls area, Memorial is off Legacy hosts Plingview, or excuse me, Legacy travels to Plingview, uh, still looking for that elusive first win of the year. Bert Burnett playing at Graham, Bridgeport at Mineral Wells, Vernon at Boyd, Bowie at Ponder, Holiday at Millsap, uh, the state-ranked Eagles, they, Holiday, they've got a 24-game district-winning streak that they are putting on the line, uh, tomorrow night. And Elektra playing at Seymour. And a couple of other games of note, Blanket at Gustine in the six-man ranks, uh, in the Abilene area, you know, outside of, just outside Brownwood, another one of those rivalry games, one of only four matchups in the state between two unbeaten. So those are amongst the games that we're looking at. Chad, tomorrow night, we are gonna talk rivalry week, we're gonna talk about the undefeateds and the winless teams out there, we are gonna talk more about these district-winning streaks, and we're gonna talk a little bit more, we talked about it last Friday night when it happened, but the highest-scoring game ever in six-man football took place last week here in the great state of Texas, and where some of our area teams have done as far as all-time totals are concerned. So we'll talk about that, and of course, have all the scores, we'll have our correspondents chime in, it'll be a great night, as we have at 9:30 to midnight, or following your game, then you'll join us here on the Chad Hasty Radio Network.
Yeah, absolutely, uh, go to a game, then, uh, once you, once you get out, turn on your radio, and, uh,
Okay, all right, Chad, before, before I let you go tonight,
Yeah.
All right, the, the ultimate, uh, the ultimate food you get at concession stand, now obviously, you know, it, it, it travels food with me, you know, of course, last week you were out there sampling brisket and ribs,
Yeah, that's good.
And we've talked chicken fried steak in the past on this program, but, all right, if you go to a game and you go to a concession stand, what is the go-to for you?
I, I'm a simple man, I think, I think everybody knows that, I'm a simple man, give me a good hot dog, give me a good hot dog.
Good hot dog.
I'm, I'm happy, I'm happy with a good hot dog while watching a game.
I'm, I'm, I'm right there with you, I, I like, I like hot dog, not everybody does this, not everybody has the Frito pie in the bag, that, that is, that's Texas legend right there.
That is, that is.
In my opinion, you, you go, you go that route, um, and if they have barbecue sandwiches.
Oh, yeah.
Those, those are my go-tos, and then if you just like little snacky, you know, then, then it's just, yeah, give me, just give me a tub of popcorn and I'm good.
Yeah, that, that, that's good too, and then I will say, uh, when, when, when you get that first really good cold front, and I'm talking a cold, I know, I don't say cool front, a cold front, give me some of that, uh, quick mix hot chocolate, just, it, it brings back some memories.
There you go, yeah, yeah, absolutely, man, we get into late October, November, Weeks 10 and 11, hopefully in about three weeks, when you get out to the game, it may be instead of 80s or 90s like it's continuing to be, if it's more like, you know, around 45 or 50 at kickoff, it goes down as the game goes on, you know, real football weather, give me some of that hot chocolate, man, outstanding.
Absolutely.
Outstanding, buddy.
Mark Finkner, thank you for your time, appreciate it.
You got it, man, y'all have a great night.
You too, that's Mark Finkner with the West Texas Friday Night Scoreboard Show, which you can hear on this station, we'll be right back.
The Titan of Texas Talk Radio, Chad Hasty. Talking with newsmakers and about the issues that matter to you. The Chad Hasty Show, weekdays from 5 to 7 p.m. Chad's show is also digital with the Chad Hasty Show Podcast. The Chad Hasty Show Podcast can be downloaded on Apple Podcasts, Amazon Music, Spotify, and the radio-on-demand page at kfyo.com. The Chad Hasty Show, all across Texas during your drive home, weekdays from 5 to 7 p.m.
Are you prepared for an emergency or disaster? Because it's not a matter of if, but when. Don't find yourself saying,
I'll trust water bottles and a flashlight to save the day, but I'll be proved wrong.
With a tornado approaching? I'll realize that I like a wheelchair-accessible shelter.
When the floodwaters rise, I'll be up in the attic with 20 cans of beans. It's a recipe for disaster.
Let's prepare so we all have a better story to tell. Get started at ready.gov/olderadults. Brought to you by FEMA and the Ad Council.
Uh, let's see, we've got quite a few things still to get to, uh, here on the program, having a, uh, having a good time, lots of guests today on, uh, on the program. Tomorrow, we've got Congressman Jody Arrington scheduled to, uh, stop by, and, uh, we will also visit with Kim Sansom, uh, once again tomorrow, and we'll have the folks on from the, uh, Slaton, uh, the St. Joseph's, uh, Sausage Festival, so that's gonna be, uh, happening tomorrow. But again, another busy show, just busy shows, and, uh, that's good, lots of stuff going on. And I think next week, we're gonna hear from Senator Ted Cruz, again, uh, spoke to, uh, his folks earlier today about, uh, having him back on the program, so, uh, it's, uh, we're counting down the days, that's for sure. Uh, earlier today, Nick had said that he was not a fan of the Chick-fil-A Nuggets. Now, he's a fan of Chick-fil-A, he's a fan of the sandwich, but if you cut the sandwich in, you know, into little squares, he's not a fan of that, he's not a fan of the Nuggets. And a texture sent this in earlier, and I just now have a chance to get to it, uh, the more we learn about Nick, the more I wonder who hurt him. So, uh, Nick, people, they, they have questions, they, uh, they just, they, they've got questions about you, that's, uh, that's, that's really all it is. Uh, 806-680-2790. Now, we may explore this a little bit deeper on Saturday, because I think Nick is gonna be, uh, is gonna come out to the Gun and Blade Show, so we may, we, we may explore some of these, uh, uh, the, these, uh, these Nick topics a little bit deeper on Saturday. So for the KFYO audience, uh, we will be on the air, and, uh, you won't want to miss out on that. The Harris campaign and Democrats, a little bit worried about the state of Michigan, which remember Tim Walz, he's supposed to help out. Uh, that, that's one of the things you pick Tim Walz for if you're Kamala Harris, is to help you out with, uh, Michigan and Minnesota and, uh, some of these other states, uh, and, and he's, he's not delivering. They're worried about turnout in Detroit. In fact, there's another story that we'll get to, uh, here shortly, that Trump, he might be winning just about all of these swing states right now. That he is looking pretty good in, uh, these swing states, and Kamala Harris's campaign, you've got down-ballot Democrats that are very worried that Kamala Harris is going to bring down some of these down-ballot races, especially in the US Senate. Because her campaign is just, it, 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 at this point, it's, it, you know, it's, it's pretty much floundering. The campaign of joy is, uh, has, has, uh, has stopped being joyful. Tell Nick to try the grilled nuggets, they're the bomb. Nick is saying no to the grilled nuggets. I, Nick, what is, what happened to you? Are you just not a Nugget fan? Yeah, okay, that's strange too, I don't know. Let's give away the other family four pack, the family four pack that we, we thought we had given away, I feel bad for the listener in Abilene who called in, and he thought he had won something, but no, 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 not, not gonna happen. Uh, if you would like to go to the Gun and Blade Show, we're gonna try caller number eight one more time. Be in Lubbock, or in the Lubbock area where you can go to the Gun and Blade Show and pick up these tickets tomorrow, Friday, you gotta pick up these tickets, family four-pack of tickets to the Gun and Blade Show. Caller number eight, 1-800-687-0790, or 806-699-5396, 806-699-5396. We'll be right back.
The Chad Hasty Show, weekdays 5 to 7 p.m. Sound off during the show by sending Chad a text at 806-680-2790. Today's markets from the Texas Department of Ag.
Well, howdy neighbors, Texas feeder cattle often reported prices steady, but cattle futures were up. October live cattle futures up 97 cents, closed at 189.17. October feeder cattle futures up a dollar, closed at 250.27. October cotton futures also up, closed at 72.66. December wheat futures up a couple of pennies, closed at 6.11 a bushel. December going down three pennies, closed at 4.18. November sorbet down a nickel, to close at $10.15 a bushel. October sorbet meal futures down five bucks, closed at $317.50 per ton. October class-free milk futures up a nickel, closed at 22.62 a hundred. November crude oil futures up $2.71, trading at 75.95 a barrel. And the Dow Jones is down 74 points, closed at 42,437. And that's market roundup from the Texas Department of Agriculture. I'm your commissioner, Sid Miller, and remember, friends, Texas agriculture matters.
The news and talk of West Texas, News Talk 95.1 and 790 KFYO. Chad Hasty, talking the news, at the start, middle, and end of your drive home, and when news breaks. This is the Chad Hasty Show.
Thank you very much for tuning in today, you can send in your thoughts on the text line, 806-680-2790, that's 806-680-2790, and you can, uh, you can weigh in on any of the topics, anything that we've been talking about today, we've been having a good time, lots of guests as well, we, uh, always enjoy bringing you some of the great guests out there. Uh, let's see, another texture weighing in on the Nuggets, uh, Chad, I agree with Nick, nuggets are kitty food, eat a sandwich like a grown-up. Now, that's not what Nick is saying. Nick has no problem eating, uh, child's food, and I would disagree and say that nuggets are, are children's food. Uh, here's how the conversation popped up, is that, uh, I'm gonna be in, in a, uh, meeting tomorrow, it's, it's gonna last the, the full day, and, uh, don't worry, I'll be here, I'll be here in time for the show. But, uh, Nick was wondering, are they gonna provide any lunch? And I said, yes, the talk was, the discussion was, a tray of nuggets from Chick-fil-A, which is what they do, they, I don't think they have a tray of sandwiches that you can get a tray, they might, I don't know.
A little pricey, I think that would be, maybe a little too pricey.
But the nuggets, you know, tray, you show, let me tell you something, you show, to the listener out there who said that's kitty food, you show up with a tray of nuggets from Chick-fil-A to just about any party out there, and you will be welcomed in, and, and people will be very happy to see you with a tray of nuggets. Now, if you go to Nick's house, they'll shine you, and they'll say,
Me, I will, I'll shine you.
Yeah, they'll say, no, please leave and take your nuggets with you and just leave.
Yeah, and, and it's not that I demean the food, I don't judge whoever is eating the food. Um, it's just, I think that the Nugget is probably, um, the least best thing on their menu. So, I'm not gonna say it's the worst, I agree it's the worst,
It's the same thing as the sandwich.
But I'm not gonna say it, it is, it, it's not.
But it is.
It's not the same.
It's, um, and, and Do you like the, do you like the chicken tender?
The chick, I like a good chicken tender.
From Chick-fil-A, do you like the chicken tender?
I, I didn't even know they sell that.
Okay.
I thought you get sandwich or you get Nugget.
They have quite a few other things on their menu.
Ah, I don't get it, I, there's a fruit cup.
There is a fruit cup, it's a good fruit cup too.
A, a good fruit cup.
Yes.
Is always good. I just, I, there's very few chicken nuggets that I enjoy. My favorite, now I do like these chicken nuggets, they are, uh, uh, they're buffalo, buffalo chicken nuggets.
Wait.
They're very good.
Are you talking about, are you talking, are you talking about
You're not gonna guess what it is, you're not gonna, no, they're not
Okay, thank you, thank you, okay, good.
Again, I have nothing against those, those are good.
Yeah.
Boneless, boneless wings.
Yeah.
I know there's a principle out there.
Yeah, they're not wings.
Yeah, that you have to, you know, uh, uh, kick them to the curb. I, I'll call them a wing, I'll call them, I'll, I'll call them a, a buffalo wing, even with or without.
Yeah, if you wanna lie to yourself, that's fine.
Sands bone or with the bone, either one.
That's fine.
Uh, no, these are, the ones I'm talking about, they're, uh, they're frozen, okay, so they're, they're, they're frozen, chicken nuggets, but they're, they're, the, the breading is, uh, buffalo, and it's very good. Those are the ones that I like. Unfortunately, Chick-fil-A does not sell those, uh, I'm not a fan of the Chick-fil-A Nuggets, uh, and, and to, to, the person who said grilled, um, those are worse than the, uh, those are much worse.
Wow.
But I would, I would eat the breaded ones, I will not eat the grilled ones.
Wow, that's, uh, Nick bringing the heat today.
Yeah.
Uh, let's see, Elizabeth weighing in, you say Harris is floundering, I'd say she's dead in the water, at least flounder, a floundering is still alive, she's just not, I, I'm not, uh, Elizabeth, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna go there, I'm not, I'm not gonna say that this is done, or that, uh, Trump is won, it's still too much time, uh, for crazy, wacky things to happen, and, um, uh, I, I like the, I like the trend that Donald Trump is on right now, but, uh, I'm not ready to say that this thing is a done deal, and that Trump is going to absolutely win. Uh, I'm not gonna, not gonna say that, and Elizabeth says he is gonna win, he's winning because he has a winning platform, a winning record, has been working his butt off to meet everybody he can, spread his message far and wide, it's not hard to understand, as far as Nick goes, I don't think anybody hurt him during his childhood, but I think Nick is, uh, just now taking on, uh, his mantle as a full adult, that's a big step and worthy of congratulations. He's, uh, yeah, okay, I see that, I like that. Donald Trump declining an invitation to a second debate with Kamala Harris hosted by Fox News, very smart thing by Donald Trump, there's no reason to debate, even on Fox News, there's no reason for, uh, Trump to debate Kamala Harris. Again, the former president declining an additional debate with I don't think that Brett Baer and Martha McCallum would do that. I, 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 uh, I have more respect for them than I do, uh, these other, uh, anchors that are out there. And, uh, I, I think that they would do a, a fine job, uh, but there's risk. There's risk you run doing a debate like that. And Trump did not come across in the, uh, first debate that wonderfully, um, though I think this would be a better debate for Donald Trump. Uh, I, 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 you know, Kamala Harris could still, could still have a gotcha moment. She could still be, she, she could still have one of those moments where she comes out of nowhere and just makes up something and gets Trump on his heels. So, uh, for that reason, votes are being cast. They're going to be cast by, uh, October 24th and the 27th. Early voting has already started. And again, there's no guarantee that Kamala Harris, uh, would even accept a Fox News debate because she has turned down Fox News at least two times, at least two times. She has said no to a Fox News debate, uh, but this keeps going back on Trump to be the bad guy and say that he's not going to debate. I, I think she's going to do a, a CNN town hall. Uh, maybe Trump will do a town hall, uh, one more town hall. I'm, I'm, I'm a fan of the town hall, uh, you know, forums or, you know, I would have been fine with more of these town hall forums, uh, going on if I'm Trump. Uh, you, maybe you have a town hall in Pennsylvania. You know, maybe you partner up with Fox News or Newsmax or somebody and try to do a town hall in Pennsylvania or North Carolina, uh, or, uh, maybe in Wisconsin and you really hammer home these swing states as we get closer and closer to Election Day. Uh, another texture, which part of New York City is Nick from? It's a great question. Uh, he is a Yankee, we know that. Uh, he does hate biscuits and, uh, you know, uh, there, there's not much more I could say on that topic. Uh, when we come back, your phone calls, your texts and much more on the Chad Hasty Show.
The Chad Hasty Show can be heard all over West Texas, weekdays from five to seven PM. Tune in on News Talk 95.1 and 790 KFYO in Lubbock. News Talk 940 in Amarillo. News Talk 94.7 and 1470 KYYW in Abilene and in Wichita Falls on News Talk 96.3 and 1290. The Chad Hasty Show, make it a part of your drive home, weekdays from five to seven PM.
Everybody's felt sad, angry, or stressed before. That's okay, unless you're driving, because when you're behind the wheel, these emotions could lead to serious injury or death. Emotional driving is a form of distracted driving because it keeps you from focusing on the road and other drivers, road workers, or pedestrians around you. So if you're sad, angry, or stressed, pull over safely and get control because your mood shouldn't put you or others in danger. Be safe. Drive smart. A message from text dot.
All right, back on the Chad Hasty Show. Thank you very much for tuning in today as we, I'll begin to wrap things up here on the program. You can, uh, send in your thoughts on the text line, eight oh six, six eight zero two seven nine zero. That's eight zero six, six eight zero two seven nine zero. Uh, let's see, uh, some of the, some of the, uh, other news of the day, obviously done with Hurricane Milton. So the cleanup, uh, going on in Florida, they said that 45 tornadoes were reported in Florida yesterday. Uh, saw another story, th- this is not what you want to see. Uh, alligators, uh, stalking homes in some of the flooded areas and, uh, that, uh, rivers forecast to break water levels, uh, and a, uh, they're seeing a growing risk of flooded electric cars that are bursting into flames. Overall, less damage than what was feared, which is a, uh, good thing. The storm going a little bit south of Tampa Bay, uh, which, uh, which really helped things out, but, uh, 3 million people without power. 3 million people with, uh, without, uh, without power. Uh, you could send in, uh, your thoughts on the, uh, text line, eight oh six, six eight zero two seven nine zero. That's eight oh six, six eight zero two seven nine zero. Uh, one texture says, asking, uh, is it true that Kamala, Kamala Harris has a path to, uh, win Alaska? I, I did see that headline. Now they're, I, I think people are just kind of throwing Hail Marys up there. Uh, I don't think so. I think, uh, Alaska is pretty, pretty good, pretty good for, uh, Donald Trump. Uh, pretty good for Donald Trump and the Republicans. Uh, I think the last, uh, poll that I saw dealing with Alaska was Trump was up by about six percentage points. So, I mean, the, the Harris campaign, they can hope, uh, all they want to, that, uh, they may win Alaska, but, uh, no, I, I don't see, uh, I don't see that happening. Uh, eight zero six, six eight zero two seven nine zero. So we have the Wall Street Journal. Saw this, uh, earlier this afternoon, Iran's a secret warning to US allies, don't help Israel or you're next. Tehran threatening in secret diplomatic back channels to target the oil-rich Arab Gulf states and other American allies in the Middle East if their territories or airspace are used for an attack on Iran. Israel has threatened, uh, Tehran with several, uh, with a severe reprisal after Iran fired about 180 ballistic missiles at Israel earlier this month, with some Israeli officials and commentators pushing for damaging strikes on Tehran's nuclear facilities or oil infrastructure. In that event, Iran has warned that it would respond with devastating hits on Israel's civilian infrastructure, would retaliate against any Arab state that facilitated the attack. The, uh, officials, uh, said the countries that Iran is threatening include Jordan, the United Arab Emirates, Saudi Arabia, and Qatar, all of which has US troops. The states have, uh, told the Biden administration that they don't want their military infrastructure or airspace to be used by the US or Israel for any offensive operations against Iran. While the Iranian regime's, uh, threats are vague, they raise concerns, uh, about, again, the ever-expanding or possible ever-expanding war. But this is what Iran's going to do though. They're going to threaten, they're not going to threaten the US. Not yet, but by proxy they do. Uh, they're not going to threaten the United States. They're not going to threaten Israel and it's, well, they are threatening Israel, uh, but, but they're going to, they're going to threaten the, the allies and try to box Israel in that way. I don't think Israel gives a damn. I think Israel's going to do what Israel wants to do, just like the United States is going to do, whatever the U- United States wants to do to protect, uh, its interests. And Israel's going to do the same, as they should be allowed to do. Uh, I saw a headline earlier today that the administration is upset that Israel isn't sharing all their information, uh, with the United States. Well, why would they right now? Do you think Israel really trusts Joe Biden? I mean, really? Do you, do you think that they really trust Joe at this point? I doubt it. So whatever Israel is coming up with, whatever plans they have, they may inform the United States just before they launch, but I wouldn't tell Joe Biden everything I was up to. Again, Biden talks out of both sides of his mouth when it comes to, uh, the, the Israelis. I, uh, yeah, I, I don't, uh, I don't, uh, I, I wouldn't blame Israel at all from keeping information away from the US at this point, especially with Joe in office. They don't trust Joe, they don't trust Kamala Harris, that's for sure. Want to remind you that you can download the Chad Hasty Show Podcast. It's available after every program, one, uh, right there on your favorite podcast platform. You also have the Current in Cask Podcast that you can download as well. Enjoy the rest of your evening. Tomorrow, an open line Friday. Looking forward to that. Stay safe, stay healthy. God bless you all. We'll see you back here tomorrow at 5:00 PM.
The Chad Hasty Show, a presentation of the Texas Town Square Media Network. The views and opinions expressed during the Chad Hasty Show are not necessarily the views of this station staff, management, advertisers, or Town Square Media.